Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I welcome you to the Bloomfield Board of Education meeting. First meeting of the year, January 8th, 2019. Would everyone please rise for our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Before Mrs. Bolton reads our opening statement, I think it's appropriate to have a moment of silence. I just never expected to have a list so lengthy since our last meeting. But since our last meeting, we lost Lou Siobhan. And some of you who have been in Bloomfield awhile will recognize him as a longtime staff member and who finished his career as principal at Bloomfield High School. He died on December 21st. Betty Egan, who was a longtime employee here in Bloomfield and was a dietitian working out of central office, she passed away on December 29th. John Coghill, who was a teacher in elementary and the middle school that both Mrs. Bolton and I worked with, passed away on January 3rd. And just this morning, we got the very sad news that Terry Williams-Smith, a music teacher out of the Metacomet School, who also worked for a time at the middle school and worked with me at the high school, she passed away. So, and then just not to lengthen the list, but a former student of mine, one of my many sons from Bloomfield High School, in fact, he played basketball for me, a member of the class of 1982, Raja Weaver-Bay, passed away about a week ago. So it's been a tough start of the new year, but I ask you please to, let's do a moment of silence for all of the named persons. Mrs. Bolton, would you read our opening statement, please?
Certainly. Good evening. As Secretary of the Board of Education, I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. The Board, the Superintendent, and I are pleased that you have joined us as we celebrate achievement, review information, and make policy decisions related to the effective operation of Bloomfield Public Schools. This is a regular meeting, and all items that will be discussed or voted on this evening have been posted as required by state law. As the Bloomfield Board of Education, we are here to set goals, listen to reports of the Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve the problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the Superintendent. Meetings of the Board of Education are open to the public. It is the time when the Board conducts its business of governing the school system in a public arena. The regular meetings are not meetings with the public. Therefore, comments from the audience will be confined to the time designated for the public to address the Board. The quorum and courtesy are important elements in effective public meetings. Please silence your cellphones or communication devices and refrain from talking while others are speaking. Since it is legally mandated that proceedings be accurately recorded, the Board Chair may have to ask for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. I am pleased that you have taken the time this evening to join us. We are very proud of this school system, and thank you for your interest in Bloomfield Public Schools.
Thank you, Mrs. Bolton. Our consent agenda, approval of the minutes for our last meeting, December 11th, 2018. Mr. Walters?
Yes, I move that the Bloomfield Board of Education approves the minutes from the December 11th, 2018 regular Board meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been properly moved in second. Any edits, corrections? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, motion passes. Thank you. This first part of our, oh no, wait a minute, let me don't get ahead of myself. We're not having a student rep report this evening. There was nobody available from Global Experience Magnet School. So now we're onto recognitions, and it gives me a great deal of pleasure to be allowed to make a few opening statements. With the football coaches or whoever is here representing the football team, please come up here and face your crowd. Just wait. The Bloomfield High School football team, as many of you are aware, secured the Central Connecticut Conference, the CCC Championship, after a win over Northwest Catholic on November 3rd, 2018. They qualified for the state tournament, but then they went on to begin the playoffs. And playoffs were begun at Bloomfield High School, and Bloomfield High went up against Woodland High School. And they found out very quickly just how good the Warhawks were because they beat them 49 to 10, well on their way. But that opened up the opportunity, and some people were very afraid of, we had to face Ansonia. Ansonia, who is a perennial state champion, we not only had to face Ansonia, but we had to face Ansonia in Ansonia on their field. And to make matters even worse, it was on a rain-soaked day on a football field that shouldn't even been allowed to host a game because the players were standing in mud and water ankle-deep most of the night. But they prevailed because they won that game 26 to 19.[514.12][514.12](APPLAUSE). Which put them in the championship game against Hattam Killingworth, and on December 8th, 2018, they beat Hattam Killingworth convincingly at New Britain Stadium, 25 to 7.[534.38][534.38](APPLAUSE). Now, state championships in football are not new to the high school because the last time we were, we won a state title was 2015, but this 2018 title is Bloomfield's ninth state championship team. So congratulations to Coach Outlaw and the entire Warhawk team.[561.32][561.32](APPLAUSE). Coach, would you like to, I know you don't like to stand up in front of a mic.
I don't like to stand up in front of a microphone, but I'm here now. I'm excited. Thank you so much for having us. Thank you so much. It really actually started with the Board, and I know you guys don't realize what you do, but in August, when I needed helmets for these freshmen, you approved it. And having those freshmen, we had five freshmen on the varsity roster at the end of the season. Two of them started the entire season. And I'm really proud to say, it wasn't just the varsity, we won state championship, but our freshman was undefeated, our JV team was undefeated, and our varsity team went 12-1. And we're headed in the right direction. They're doing great in school, they're great at ads here at Warner College. I will be able to score a touchdown in the championship game. I'm really proud of these guys because as the coach and my coaches, we worked very hard to put something together for us to win. But these guys had to practice in the rain, they had to practice in the snow, and they had to practice in the cold weather, and they did. I'm very proud of them. Thank you.[638.16][638.16](APPLAUSE).
Go Hawks! Yeah![646.16][646.16](LAUGHING).
Thank you, Coach Outlaw. We are equally as proud of you. Dr. Thompson?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, colleagues, parents, and our television viewing audience. The next, our next recognition is Ms. Ryan, Ms. Murphy, and also the parent volunteer, Tiffany Winther from Whittenberry Early Childhood Magnet School for their efforts in establishing Kindness Day. Kindness Day is an annual event started to honor the victims and loved ones of Sandy Hook community with the goal of spreading kindness throughout the community. The children, along with their teachers, share acts of kindness throughout the day for other children, staff, and members of the community. Kindness Day is truly a community effort, and we thank all of you for extending the spirit of kindness throughout our district and the community. I would like to welcome Ms. Haley Ryan to the podium to share more information about Kindness Day.[718.41][718.41](APPLAUSE).
Thank you so much, Dr. Thompson, and members of the Board, and everyone here tonight. I just want to thank you, and thank you to the PTO, that principal, and Tiffany Winther, who is the parent volunteer with us at Winston Mary. I just want to take a few moments. Anybody who knows me knows this has been a challenge, about the action, yeah.[747.32][747.32](LAUGHING). And just like you guys know a little bit about how meaningful this day is to us. This is the fourth day, the fourth year that we have celebrated Kindness Day at Winston Mary. And every year, it's really a personal mission, and I know Tiffany's been right there beside with me to really grow this impact in our community. The first year at Winston Mary, we had a kindness exchange, simply every classroom did something kind for some, another classroom, we intentionally asked the children, what could we do, like, for example, make this beautiful accessory, the hybrid. We received it on December 14th this year. Some classes played over each other, some classes focused to each other, some classes in white and other classrooms, these acts are simple, but very intentional and meaningful. It's really what we want to give to our children. We also teach an act of kindness of the staff. The next year, we really wanted to grow it a little bit larger, and so we had our students, we've had our teachers, but we wanted to get our parents involved. So we went to the PTO and let them know about this day, and we had great ideas from parents who said, "You would love to make cards for our community helpers, and we would also act and deliver care packages." And what a community feel to that, that they brought that in. And luckily, also designing kindness begins with these stickers for us. And so, along with our care packages we deliver, we also deliver these kindness begins with these stickers, along with a note for anyone receiving that package, so they know that this act of kindness is done with the loved ones of Sandy Hook in our hearts. And we also ask, we also ask that you pay it forward. And we give them these stickers so they remember it. This year, it gave me great pride to see one of my favorite community members, Isaac Stiegl, hand these out in the morning, and I saw photos of our Senator, our Mayor, and our Deputy Mayor sporting these alongside of Isaac. And then, all the children go home with these as well. So we have some of these for you guys here tonight, and we've got a deck of that people for you. But that second year, we got the community involved, also connected with our community resister, Cannon Fugelitz, who brought the officers along to just congratulate the children on being great citizens that day. They came in, and they gave a high five because they said, "I'm proud of you." And for a police officer to take the time to tell a child bad, so their hearts just exploded. And the officers said, "We're going to be a part of this every, every year." Then the next year, we had our firefighters join us as well, and they again said, "Count us in, we're here," and they put the stickers on the counters, and they said, "We're going to be here for this every year." This year, they were busy, and I didn't hear replying mail from them, and so I wasn't sure, but they'd get a pretty good. And about 10 o'clock on December 14th, it was pretty busy, I stepped outside of my classroom, and I can see the main entrance, and there's a fire truck right there. And they just showed up. And I think that that's a huge part of what this day has done, is really just showing up for each other and being present. Our police officers came, four officers came to Winston Mary to really back the kids and children. Sorry, I shouldn't have said that. Five officers came because they offered rough, which made I not clear.[1001.13][1001.13](LAUGHING). The kids were speechless, except for 18, 3, and 4-year-olds, so these speechless is incredible.[1008.82][1008.82](LAUGHING). When they left, they had, "Oh my goodness, he's a real Paw Patrol!"[1014.01][1014.01](LAUGHING). And what was really beautiful, the scene, their interactions, was the officers getting some ownership of this day as well, because they expected it, and they brought these junior officer figures for our children and said, "You guys earned these stickers. We're so proud of you. You're junior police officers in the group." And the children were so proud to wear that that day. And this year, because of our parent involvement, Tiffany organized online sign-ups for families to either donate goods, like chips, cookies, candies, or write gift cards if they were able to. And then if that wasn't really right for them, we also had some time on Friday that we asked the parents to donate time to deliver goods into the community. And so, it was incredible because Tiffany said, she, the first year, was the one out there delivering it to people, and said that people were so overcome with emotion in getting these acts of kindness that really she wanted to share. So we had families deliver things to Hooch here, in town, to the Board of Ed. We always make sure to come over here. Yeah, yeah, so these were the actors this year. And over to the CCNC, you know, the parent says, the woman at the emergency room was just overcome that she started crying and everything. And her hospital, because of the nurse CPR, and he said, "Because of that, that was the only thing he got to eat in a 10-hour shift."[1122.01][1122.01](LAUGHING). We also had some folks who brought things to the Hoop Country, or to the state of town, and they were also really overcome with emotion at this gesture of kindness. It was actually their Hoop Country Day here in Bloomfield. And just right there, they turned around and said, "We're going to give this box to a family that we know would really appreciate that, and we know they're coming in today." And so, just that connection and being able to see this row has been so beautiful. And I'm just going to wrap it up in just saying that, you know, we have, we have our slogan where it says, "Building a Better Room." And I always think about that, and how it's really shown on Kindness Day. And so, each year, we really try to get the rest of our, our family in Bloomfield involved. This year, I was given the opportunity to put on a workshop at our Election Day professional development, and I had 43 educators in our district, 15 to listen, and hear what does kindness look like at Winston Mary. And then they were given time to brainstorm with each other, how could they take this to their own schools. And I have to tell you guys, it was exhilarating, just hearing the discussion amongst these educators. And I know that several of the schools were going out, and I told them, "Keep it simple that first word, you know, really embrace it, embrace the joy." So I'm really excited to see what this could mean for Bloomfield, and how students can experience it as a 3-year-old, and then hopefully, you know, have that presence.
Thank you.[1236.73][1236.73](APPLAUSE).
Okay, the next item for recognition is the Connecticut Interschool Athletic Conference. Selected Bloomfield High School as one of 90 schools to be honored with the Michael's Cup Award. This is the fourth time in the second year in a row Bloomfield High School Athletic Department has received this prestigious award. The award was designed to recognize schools with athletic programs excellence with a focus on sportsmanship. And I would like to welcome Tammy, our Athletic Director, to speak about this recognition.
My name is Tammy Shondemeyer. I'm the Athletic Director here, and I'd just like to say thank you for giving me a chance to speak on behalf of the Athletic Department, all the excellence that's been happening this year already, and it's only January 8th, so we've got a whole half a year left to go. Obviously, you just met the football program, and they won a state championship, and they did a fantastic job in representing us, and so, well worth the honor tonight, appreciate that. But we also have a lot of things happening already this winter. Our girls' basketball team is 8-1. This is the best start of the, in the history of the basketball program here, and we had the likes of Nikisha Sales, who was a UConn great, you know, here, and no team has ever done a better job at starting the season than this one under the new coach, Katie DeCosta. Both our track teams are doing fantastic as usual. They've competed over the holiday break in New York, and in Rhode Island, and in Massachusetts, and they, just this past weekend, they, one of our athletes was the most valuable player at the entire meet in the state of Rhode Island. So, just to kind of give you an idea of what's happening with our athletic programs this winter, our boys are playing tonight, actually, at home, and that's why a lot of the other football players did not show up tonight, it's because there's a basketball game happening, and so they could not be here, so apologize for that. More of them would have been in attendance to receive that recognition that you guys gave them tonight, but there is a game. But the most important award so far this year is obviously the Michael's Cup. It is something that, you know, every Athletic Department strives to receive and to attain, and we are one of 19 schools to receive it this year. It measures things like athletic success, so the state championship is one of those things, but it also measures participation rates. We are, as many as 70% of our athletes or our students are athletes. And it also measures academic success, so many of our kids are on the honor roll every single semester, every single year, every single season, and so we have a high rate of academic success with our athletes. But the most important measure of this award is sportsmanship. And since 2001, Bloomfield Athletics has received 22 sportsmanship awards from the conference, from officials' boards, from basketball to football to baseball, and then also from the state recognition that we've received. So, these are some of the great things that they're doing, and, you know, we cannot overstate how proud we are to receive that Michael's Cup Award. I will say one more thing. We had so much success with these sportsmanship awards that the state asked us to pilot their new Class Act Sportsmanship Program that they started in 2017. And so, we put together a Class Act Council of student leaders who had high character and leadership skills on the teams, and they piloted this, this program called the Six Pillars of Sportsmanship, which is an annual assembly we do with all the athletes at Bloomfield High School. And they presented that assembly to their student, their student body, their peers, and then went on to present this at the State Sportsmanship Conference in 2017. We were one of three schools to ask, be asked to pilot that program, and we did it. And we were the one school that they chose to do the promotional video, which I'm going to have you guys watch right now, it's still on the website.
We are Bloomfield High School.
We are, we are, we are.
We are a Class Act school.
We are committed to sportsmanship.
We know that after there are fans, coaches, and athletes, represent our school and community.
And it's up to us.
It's up to us.
It's up to us.
It's up to us to set the example.
To create a positive atmosphere, a fighting spirit that respects our opponents and supports our team.
It doesn't matter if it's a small school or a big school.
And urban school or rural school.
This is a chance to be leaders.
To be leaders.
To lead a legacy.
We are a Class Act school.
Come join us.
Come join us.
Come join us.[1526.13][1526.13](APPLAUSE).
So that video is still on the CIIC website, so you can go there and under Class Act Schools, and you can see our kids. That, again, was in 2017. And then this year, in 2016-17, we received the Michael's Cup Award, and then also this year, for the second year in a row, we received it. And there's a picture Krista has of our students at this year's Sportsmanship Conference receiving the Michael's Cup Award. So there's that picture of those student athletes. So, as their Athletic Director, I'm extremely proud of all the successes, and again, this year is not over, and this season is not over, and I expect that, you know, there'll be, you know, my prediction is at least two more teams you will be honoring here at your Board of Ed meetings before this year is over. So thank you again.
Thank you.[1574.32][1574.32](APPLAUSE). Time for public PTO comment?
Would you give your name, your address?
Tymina Fallins, 1067 Blue Hills Avenue. I'm here as a-
You have two minutes.
Concerned parent, and I am echoing what I stated when I spoke in October. Our schools are still in need of technology. We are still lacking Chromebooks at the high school, and I believe at CASE and CAMs. So I am pleading for those resources to be added to our schools because we know that we are in a day and age where technology is taking over. SAT is becoming more computer-based, and all of these standardized tests that our kids are taking are computer-based, so we need to equip them with the technology so that they can be prepared for these benchmark assessments and compete with their peers. Thank you.
We thank you. Superintendent's Report. Mr. Guzman.
As of that date, you will notice on the one-page summary report, there is a balance approximately $1.3 million, or 3.17% of the budget, which has neither been expended nor encumbered at this particular point. At the last report given to the Board last, last month, I mentioned that the tuition bills have been coming in, and we are paying those bills and encumbering some funds in those accounts. You will notice on the one-page summary report, the tuition account 08 is the only account that shows a deficit at this particular point. This is, as you know, a very volatile account, and one that we will monitor closely for the remainder of the year. So I mentioned last meeting that these bills were coming in and as I stand here, the bills will continue to come in. And it's something that, as I mentioned before, we have to monitor because at any particular point, a child can move into the district that has some special education needs that we cannot address within the schools and that child would have to be placed out by the PPT program. So please be mindful of that as we go through the rest of the year. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Guzman? Mrs. Davis?
Yes, I just want to be clear. You said of the other students, the 7,500, the educational services, what is that difference from the 75,000 exactly?
75,000. Because of the special circumstances for their educational needs, they're placed in outside facilities. There's a whole range of facilities that they may be assigned to because of their special education needs. And whether it's autism or social-emotional adjustments or in some particular cases, as you may know, a child who's, has been identified as receiving special education services, once they graduate from high school, we still have an obligation to provide them with educational opportunities up to age 21. So those are the kinds of, of factors that go into a placement of a child and some of those facilities range in an average of $75,000.
And for the 581 that are attending the magnet schools, they are in that number?
No. Those numbers are-
She didn't say the number for the educate, those receiving that, those services?
The services, it's a number of 36 students.
36?
36 students who've been outplaced into another facility outside of the district.
And what's the number of magnet students? I'm sorry.
Are you finished?
It was 581 that are attending magnet schools.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Walters?
Yeah, so 63 special ed services, which is 93, $9,300 per student?
On average.
On average. And that's 63 and that doesn't include the 36 educational service students?
Correct.
All separate numbers, 581, 63 special ed services, and 36 educational services are all separate?
Let me clarify, the 63 are in the 581.
Okay.
Those 63 students are receiving educational services beyond, special education services beyond the regular program.
Okay.
Any other comments, question? Okay, thank you, Mr. Guzman. We have nothing under old business, under new business, Benchwork Assessments Update. Dr. Silver?
Thank you, Chairman Harris. Good evening, Board members. I'm excited to be here tonight to talk about our culture of success and specifically our 2019 mid-year academic update. So to provide an overview, our purpose tonight is to explain and review benchmark assessment logic, highlight strengths and strategies for each of our schools. And our process will be that our principals, from Ms. Eels to Mr. Malletti, will come up and describe the strengths, current academic strengths of our learners and our focus areas and strategies at this time. And that our payoff here is that through this benchmark assessment process, our teachers can target instruction, helping students to prepare to meet the end-of-year expectations while demonstrating skill on the spring assessments, including the Smarter Balanced and the SAT for participating grades. We place value in our benchmark assessments. A benchmark assessment is a standard measure that evaluates current progress and predicts future performance. It benefits us in that it informs students of their skill level. It informs instruction, the work that our teachers are doing with our learners, and it measures our student skills relative to the end-of-year grade level expectations. When we look at our benchmark assessment data, we do look at our student performance relative to where they need to be at the very end of the year. And this helps us with our sense of urgency to focus on our instruction and our work. So tonight, each of our principals, my colleagues, will share strengths and focus areas relating to the academic programs at our schools. We will share the literacy and numeracy standards where our students are demonstrating mastery at each grade level. Additionally, we will share the focus of our current work and some of the strategies our teachers are using to bring our learners to mastery in these areas. So without further delay, I'd like to invite my colleague, Lisa Eels, to come forward from Wynton Berry, early childhood magnet, to share the strengths and focus areas happening at Wynton Berry. Lisa?
Yeah, I think I can probably move it when it's time. Is that what, okay, sorry. Good evening. Thank you so much for having us here. We're very proud as a principal group to be doing this for you. You're going to be able to see the thread from pre-K on up about how we build the foundational skills for the success in the future. So at Wynton Berry, we now only have preschool. We have 18 preschool classrooms of 18 children. And so for grades pre-K, ages three and four, I'm going to be reporting out. So our strength areas from our benchmark assessments that we also do three times a year, like everyone. For age three, we found the strengths to be identify sounds of a few letters under letter-sound correspondences. And then also for four-year-olds, they produce the correct sounds for 10 to 20 letters. They're able to do that already. For another literacy standard, they use and appreciate books and other texts. They orient the books correctly, they turn the pages from front to back, and they recognize familiar books by their covers. For age four, the expectation is that they know features of a book, like a title, an author, an illustrator, and they can connect books to an author. I know that that's Eric Carl. He wrote that book. For numeracy, ages three and four, counting is a strength. So they can orally count to 10 and count up to five objects for age three. For age four, they can orally count to 20 and count 10 to 20 objects. For another area, strength area is measures time and money. So they, they don't actually, you know, have money that they're using and know how to use that, but it's that at age three, they know the sequence of basic daily events, like we go outside after lunch. And for age four, they relate time to their daily routines and schedule so they know what, what's happening every morning. Also, a watch or a clock is used to tell time. So in terms of our focus areas, so where we are focusing, our teachers do Common Formative Assessments in order to track the areas where they are, they need some assistance. So under literacy, we want to raise our children's abilities to notice and discriminate rhyme for both three and four-year-olds. And the next steps also for literacy would be demonstrating and understanding print concepts for things like where to start reading, you know, not just which direction is the book, but where to start reading and how do you follow all of those words and letters and that one little element, not what letter it is, but that it is a letter and that there are words on a page and there's spaces and upper and lower case and punctuation. So they don't have to know exactly what those things are, but many of them are learning that. In terms of connecting numerals, for numeracy, we want them to grow in the area of connecting the numerals and their quantities. So not just counting, but identifying the number and how many are in that set. So we're building. And then compares and measures. For example, they would be doing, using non-standard units, so using paper clips to measure how tall is this microphone, things like that. And again, knowing that a clock tells time or scales are for weighing. So what we do at Wynton Berry is we do all the same things everyone else does. We have data teams and we want to leverage that team support for our work. I have mentioned that we do do Common Formative Assessments. We track, we meet, teachers meet on a weekly basis about these items and they are assessing the total on an ongoing basis and talking about the strategies that they use. We have a solid SRBI process, so we progress-monitor individuals, not just the groups through the data teams, but the individuals. And our instructional coach and several of the classroom teachers and special ed support join in teams to do that on an individual basis for children. And we focus really specifically on the needs for K-entry while remaining developmentally appropriate. So we remain play-based and I want to emphasize that because that is a high-level skill. In numeracy, our continued focus is using discourse, using manipulative materials. And so that's been a thread all the way through over a couple of years now for math. And we model our thinking using manipulative materials. And lastly, our teachers lead groups, small groups, individual work, and we use numeracy stations in order to do that. So I would like to now introduce my colleague, Paul Guzzo.
Good evening, Dr. Thompson, Board of Education members, parents, family members, community members. Here to talk to you about Laurel's strengths, some of our strengths. First of all, Laurel is now kindergarten, all of kindergarten in Bloomfield, as well as first and second grade. Our kindergarten students are showing strengths in recognizing all upper and lower case letters of the alphabet in mixed-up order. They're also able to participate in conversations with partners about topics and text in small and large groups. So a teacher will do a reader aloud as a large group. Our kids are turning and talking, using a think pair share and sharing out what the story is about. And they're also doing that in small groups. Our first-grade students, they could recognize the distinguishing features of a sentence, so they'll know the, where the first word is, it has to be capitalized in the sentence, ending punctuation marks. They're doing well with those too and writing them. And students also in first grade know and use various text features, so they know the headings, table of contents, the glossaries, and they use these to locate key facts and information in a text. Our grade students, grade two students, they know how to use specific text features, the captions, headings, and bold words, to locate the facts of the story. And students also can describe how characters in a story respond to major events and challenges. In numeracy, our kindergarten students can count objects and say the number of names in standard order. Students can identify whether the number of objects in one group is greater than, less than, or equal to the number of objects in another group. And students can relate counting to addition and subtraction. So they'll come up with a number like 37 and counting on two would get them to 39 or counting back to two would get them to 35. Students can understand that two digits of a two-digit number represents the amounts of tens and ones. And then moving on to second grade, students can understand that three digits of a three-digit number represents the amounts of hundreds, tens, and ones. And also grade two students' strengths areas, they can determine whether a group of objects up to 20 has an odd or even number of members. This is just some of our strengths. Some focus areas for us that we are working on. Our kindergarten students are learning to read common high-frequency words, example "the" of. Once our kids get to know five of those high-frequency words, we put them in a text to let them have some confidence. We have sightword readers and they're actually reading books and giving them confidence that they're actually able to read books. Grade one student focus areas, they're learning how to apply grade-level phonics and word-analysis skills to decode words. And our grade two students are learning to ask and answer such questions as who, what, when, where, why, and how to demonstrate their understanding of key details in a text. Some strategies that we're using for literacy, all of our kindergarten teachers are using the Wilson Foundation Program with all of our students in Tier One to improve our literacy foundational skills. And all of our first and second grade teachers are using the Open Court Program with all students to improve their literacy foundational skills. Grade two, we have academic reviews and we meet with teachers, a group of us meet with teachers, to discuss strategies to help meet the needs of all their students. And we have data teams with all the grade levels to monitor the progress of all of our students, to review the assessments, and to give teachers strategies to help the students who are struggling. In numeracy, our kindergarten students are learning to count to 100 by ones and tens. Our grade one students are learning to add and subtract within 20, but they're also learning to demonstrate fluency for adding and subtracting within 10, so to know it by memory, like eight plus two is 10. Grade two students are learning to fluently add and subtract within 20 using mental math strategies. Example of that would be if we're taking a number like 13 minus four, that we would say it's really 13 minus three, which will give them the 10 minus one, which will give them the nine, using those kind of mental math strategies. Students use manipulives in kindergarten and base ten blocks to provide a model when learning the concept of counting. Students perform time drills to reinforce basic math facts. They work with peers to practice math and they play engaging math fact games to help them memorize the math fact skills. And students also have daily opportunities to apply math facts in real-life situations. Example, if we're going to the cafeteria, lunch costs $2.75, you're bringing in $3, how much should you get back? 25 cents. Okay. Thank you very much, everyone. Those are our Laurel's strengths and focus areas and I'd like to introduce Jocelyn Paglidge from Metacomet. And I'm sorry I didn't turn this.
All right, good evening, everyone. Good evening, Dr. Thompson, the board, community, family members. So to continue on, some of the strength areas for Metacomet. In the area of literacy for grade three, we have, our grade three students are strong in determining or clarifying the meanings of unknown words and phrases. And so that skill would be something in, within their reading. And now from grade two to three, instead of learning to read, you switch to more reading to learn. So they are strong with being able to clarify words that they come to and use context clues to help them. They're also strong in knowing and applying grade-level phonics and word-analysis skills and decoding words. And again, phonics is still an important component of reading for third graders as they are strengthening being able to extract information from text, so being able to decode those words to under, give meaning to the texts. In grade four, our students can refer to details and examples in a text when explaining what a text says explicitly and when drawing inferences from the text. So we are consistently having our students go back to the text and pull information, support your answer from what it says right in the text. And also describing in-depth character-setting events in a story, drama, or drawing on specific details in a text for our fourth graders. For numeracy, grade three, fluently adding and subtracting within 1,000 using strategies based on place value, the properties of operations, or the relationship between addition and subtraction. And in grade four, using place value and understanding, again, the properties of operations to perform multi-digit arithmetic. So they are strong with being able to clarify words that they come to and use context clues to help them. They're also strong in knowing and applying grade-level phonics and word analysis skills and decoding words. And again, phonics is still an important component of reading for third graders as they are strengthening being able to extract information from text. So being able to decode those words to under, give meaning to the texts. In grade four, our students can refer to details and examples in a text when explaining what a text says explicitly and when drawing inferences from the text. So we are consistently having our students go back to the text and pull information, support your answer from what it says right in the text. And also describing in-depth character setting events in a story, drama, or drawing on specific details in a text for our fourth graders. For numeracy, grade three, fluently adding and subtracting within a thousand using strategies based on place value, the properties of operations, or the relationship between addition and subtraction. And in grade four, using place value and understanding, again, the properties of operations to perform multi-digit arithmetic. And they could use place value to understand, understanding to round multi-digit whole numbers to any place. A few of our focus areas in literacy. As a whole, we are in both third and fourth grade, we want our students to be able to read and comprehend literature, including stories, dramas, and poetry independently and proficiently, and also read and comprehend nonfiction across all content areas independently and proficiently. Some of our strategies, we do use, are continuing to use the data team process. This year in the master schedule, we've built in a personalized learning block for students. So it's each grade level has thirty minutes a day where we divide the students into areas for academic interventions as well as enrichment for both ELA and math. We are using the SRBI, the scientifically research-based intervention model, to monitor student progress and be able to assess needs and target instruction. And then in literacy, we are focusing on small group instruction and guided reading within the third and fourth grade classrooms. For numeracy, some of our focus areas include making sense of problems and persevering and solving them. And that seems to just be an ongoing focus area because it's, it's always there. You just want the students to really be able to dig deep, dive into a problem, and stick with it. We're also focusing on using multiplication and division within a hundred for grade three to solve word problems and situations involving equal groups, arrays, measurements, quantities. In third grade, that's really where they start diving into multiplication and division. So again, having the focus of making sense of problems and persevering and then using their new knowledge of multiplication and division builds upon one another. And then in fourth grade, we're focusing on solving those multi-step word problems with whole numbers using all of the operations. And they include, including problems which remainders must be interpreted too. So there's that through line, actually even based on what Mr. Guzzo had said in second grade, we see the through line coming in third and fourth grade too. Again, in numeracy, we're using some very similar strategies that we're using in literacy. We still have the data team process that we are doing for both areas. Again, that personalized learning block to address needs as well as enrichment, the SRBI process. And this year, we are continuing to use Reflex Math. It's an online program that provides very specific focused practice for fact fluency. And last year it was introduced to the students, but this year the students are using it consistently daily. We've put it out to parents, they're using it at home, and we're seeing some good results from that too. So I thank you and I will, oh, and I'm sorry, I never, I never flip the side. Oops. Oh, you were doing it. Sorry. Thank you. All right. I'll turn it over to Sarah Williams from KES.
Good evening, Board of Education members, Dr. Thompson. Good evening, audience members, families viewing at home. So today I'm going to be reading for you some of the strength areas for Carmaner's Intermediate School based on the standards and what we found from the winter assessments, along with conversations with the teachers and what they're seeing in the class. So in grade five, we are noticing that students are doing well with drawing on information from multiple print or digital sources. So instead of just reading one text, they're reading multiple texts on the same subject, maybe watching a video and being able to comprehend and pull together information from all parts. Reading and comprehending informational text across the content areas independently and proficiently. So they might be reading something during their ELA block and continuing to read about it or using the same strategies in social studies. You'll notice on the next page, some of the strategies we use, our students' close read, where they are finding how to use highlighters to pull the information necessary, whether it be text features, text structures, author's craft. They are doing that in math, they are doing that in reading, science, social studies, so that it is becoming just something that they are doing with rote memory of how to pull that information. And it's showing to be successful. They are using combined knowledge of letter-sound correspondences, roots, and affixes to accurately read unfamiliar complex words in and out of text. This is a foundational skill that is really important for them to be able to understand new vocabulary. In grade six, ELA analyzing how key individual event or ideas are introduced, illustrated and elaborated in the text. Again, that is the use of the close-reading strategies has shown to have a very high effect. Trace and evaluate an argument and specific claims in text, distinguishing claims that are supported by reasons and evidence from claims that are not. And reading and comprehending literature, including stories, dramas, and poems proficiently with scaffolding as needed. If you see five point ten and six point ten, those are the highest areas for the children, the most complex for them, and the range of text complexity as well. In numeracy, in grade five, students are doing well analyzing patterns and relationships, graphing points on coordinate planes to solve real-world mathematical problems and representing and interpreting data. And then in grade six, finding and positioning integers and other rational numbers on a horizontal and vertical number line diagram, finding position pairs of integers and rational numbers on a coordinate plane and applying and extending previous understanding, which this is a really great one, of the number systems for rational numbers. So what they're learning in the three-five band, they are able to bring to the six-eight band. And on the next slide, thank you, Ms. Cherry. Some of the standards that we are continuing to work on in English Language Arts are within craft and structure, analyzing multiple accounts of the same event or topic, noting important similarities and differences in the point of view they represent. So we talked about in the previous one that they're able to see multiple and between texts and digital. Now we're drilling a little bit deeper. And the range of text complexity for sixth grade, they are doing proficiently in fifth grade, moving up to the next band in sixth grade, we are really focusing on them because it's the next level of work. Numeracy, I'm going to talk about the strategies together because we repeat a lot of them for just good practice for both. So I would like to just speak of numeracy. So numbers and operations of fractions, solving word problems involving addition, subtraction of unlike, fractions referring to the same whole, including cases of unlike denominators. Anything that you see that's a word problem, the children are close reading to pull out key details, which has been very helpful. So we are on the right track here. And in geometry, finding the area of right triangles, other triangles, special quadrilaterals, polygons, by composing into rectangles or decomposing into triangles and other shapes. This is actually something that my, my teachers came out with right now. Geometry is a skill that's taught later in the school year, so it was not a surprise to them at this point that this is an area that we need to get to earlier than later. So because it's not within their Go Math unit that they get till later, they're finding ways to add them to the do now, which is kind of meta cognition, getting them ready for their morning. They're adding and spiraling into that time in the morning so that we're reaching those standards that they may not normally reach till later in the year. So the strategies, we all know that students don't improve and don't learn until the adults do as well. So adult action is the biggest step for us to take in improving our children. So some of the strategies that we're using, John Hattie is a researcher, we've talked about this now for a couple of years, he has effect-sized strategies that indicate which strategies are the most effective to improve and move children. We are intentionally picking those strategies and pairing them with the standards of helping children based on the scientifically research-based intervention that we are doing in our schools. So we are identifying through our data, so whether it be STAR, the IABs, these are all of our benchmark and common formative assessments and unit assessments, where the children are having deficits and then able to pick strategies to intentionally work on with them and move them forward. As I've spoken about the close reading of text across content areas, being very intentional about having the children use the meta-textual markers to pick out key idea and details, to pick out vocabulary, to really help the children get better at reading and picking out the important parts of the text to help them comprehend. The workshop model is coming from Columbia University, the Teachers College. It's really increasing the reading and the writing volume the students are doing. Individualized teacher academic reviews and learning and growth discussions. I actually, my, my last two days have been sitting with every single one of my certified staff members, picking apart their entire class, looking at all of their data and talking about each and every single one of the children of Bloomfield that we have in our school, and really figuring out the plan that we have for the kids. So they are working really hard. We are working together to figure out how to best use our time and how we are working with the kids. I'll go a little faster. Ongoing professional development, we've gone out and found some support for us and helping us figure out if we think we're doing it, but the kids aren't learning, then we're not really doing it. So what's happening? Can we have a different eyes, a different lens telling us what they see versus what we see? Homogeneous grouping, this is the first year we're trying this in grade six. We have a teacher who is working with some of the children who are showing a greater need in mathematics. She has shown amazing improvement for some of our children, the growth that some of our kids have. We, out of the students in that group who were at a level one last year, she has eight identified to be the level three with reasons why and showing growth from that class. Student conferencing, goal-setting, when you give a kid the idea that they can do it and teach them the ways to identify what their goals need to be, not just I want to do better, they actually pick strategies they're going to use for themselves. It's a really high-effect size strategy. Close reading, we've talked about, use of data, bi-weekly data teams and monthly curriculum writing workshops, introducing students to real-world examples, and all of our intervention, scientifically research-based intervention groups. We also have PLB, we are in year five for it. So it's been shown to be very effective. Thank you for listening, and I would, it would be my honor to introduce Dr. Trevor Ellis from CAMHS.
Good evening, Dr. Thompson. Good evening, Board, viewing audience, family members. Happy to see everyone here tonight and excited about the growth in our children at Carmanay Race Middle School. After the winter assessment, I was very, very excited about the improvements of our students. And I'll begin by sharing some of those improvements that demonstrate, at least coming from the sixth grade, some things that I'm very happy about. Number one, in literacy, I would definitely talk about vocabulary acquisition and word usage. It's demonstrating as a strength area in our, in our seventh grade. Also, key ideas and details in literature. And I like to make the distinction between literature and nonfiction text. It's important that our children begin to really, really improve and increase their amount of nonfiction reading and writing. So I want you to earmark that as we move forward. Another key area for seventh grade currently is a range of reading and level of text complexity in literature. Again, that's across all content areas. And also including our creative writing and reading as well when we talk about poetry. Again, in eighth grade, we're seeing that as a strength as well, vocabulary acquisition and use, and also key ideas and details, the biggest difference between seventh and eighth grade now, is that the craft and structure in nonfiction reading is becoming a lot stronger as we move forward. In the area of numeracy, grade seven, our students are able to apply and extend previous understandings of operations with fractions to add, subtract, multiply, and divide rational numbers. It's very important that we also note the importance of number systems. It's basically the foundation of all of math, if you really know math. Again, for seventh grade, analyze proportional relationships and use them to solve real-world mathematical problems. Very important. Also for eighth grade, working with radical and integer exponents, a quick way of making a long, long number look very small. That's very important because our students will be making a lot of money soon. We want to make sure they understand how to count those commas and count the money real quick. For eighth grade as well, now know that there are numbers that are rational and approximate them by rational numbers and labors terms, eight over two equals four, just to give you an example, working with fractions and ratios and proportions. When I look at the areas of focus, I'm happy because a lot of the things that we need to focus on in the seventh grade for literacy also are same areas that we need to focus on in eighth grade. So we're not finding that our students are in pockets, understanding certain information and not understanding others. So we're kind of along the same vein. For seventh grade literacy, range of reading and level of text complexity of nonfiction. Again, it's very important to identify nonfiction. And also for seventh grade, craft and structure in literature, basically, we're taking literature and understanding the figurative language, understanding why, the purpose, why an author would write about a particular topic and things like that, and drawing inferences and conclusions from that information. For eighth grade, again, text complexity of nonfiction reading and writing. And as you noticed from Ms. Williams, she noted that the RI eight-ten is probably of the highest range that we're looking for. So we're shooting for those, for those goals in the seventh and eighth grade. As we move on down for to numeracy, for areas of focus, statistics and probability, geometry. And the reason why we are addressing that too is, I think even the high school has changed there, I don't know if Mr. Mallett is going to address that part, but they have also changed the courses that we take at the high school based on this area. So we want to address it down at the middle school a lot sooner. And eighth grade, expressions and equations, your basic algebra, we want to make sure that we address that in geometry as well. The areas, how we're going to address these areas, we're looking at using our data teams. I know you heard that several times tonight. And also, another key strategy is our close-reading strategy, increasing, again, informational text. We want our kids reading science and social studies books and things like that. Using rigorous question and task, we all know that task predicts the promising outcome, and providing small group instruction to make sure we're addressing the kids that are not doing so well, along with, and pushing the students that are doing very well. In the area of math, but not necessarily just for math, we want to make sure we're using mathematical discourse and debate with real-world problems. We also want to increase our enrollment for our after-school program. Right now, I have plenty of seats for our, for our students. So please, take advantage of that opportunity. The interdisciplinary instruction of numeracy, we want to make sure we're speaking the language across all disciplines, spiraling our instruction in our assessments, and increasing opportunities to make real-world connections and applications. Thank you for listening tonight, and I would like to introduce Nicole Poplin from GEMS.
Thank you, Dr. Ellis. Good evening and Happy New Year to Dr. Thompson, Mr. Chairman, Board members, and the viewing audience here and at home. At the Global Experience Magnet School, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students', areas of strength in literacy are their ability to cite evidence from the text to support analysis from a singular source. For example, in the sixth grade, students are currently reading One Crazy Summer, and they were able to identify multiple central ideas and support their claim with text evidence from an article on the history of the Black Panther Party. In the eighth grade, students are adept at citing textual evidence that strongly supports an analysis of what the text states explicitly and through inference. In the eleventh grade, their adeptness at the aforementioned skills become more refined in that they are able to cite strong and thorough text-based evidence from multiple sources to support their interpretation and are able to determine several and analyze the theme's development throughout the text. In numeracy, students are proficient in interpreting and applying the multiplication of fractions, proportional reasoning, and proportional relationships, lines, and linear equations. At the high school level, students exhibit skills in solving equations as a process of reasoning and representing and solving equations and inequalities graphically as well as mathematically. In the upcoming months, our focus areas in literacy will be to hone the skills of analyzing how sentences, chapters, scenes, stanzas, et cetera, fit into the overall structure of a text, determine the structure an author uses to organize a text, to delineate and evaluate the argument and claims in a text, and determine the author's point of view and purpose and which rhetoric is effective. In regards to numeracy, the focus areas are, and I forgot to advance the slide, pardon me. Oh, you did. Thank you, Mrs. Cherry. In regards to numeracy, the focus areas are interpreting, applying the division of fractions, solving problems with rational numbers, solving literal equations, and creating equations that describe numbers and relationships. Instructional strategies geared towards improving student achievement Instructional strategies geared towards improving student achievement are the use of reading quadrants, close reading, CSI, which stands for Claim Support and Interpretation, Math Practice One and Three, which develops the skills of problem solving with perseverance and constructing viable arguments and critiquing the reasoning of others. In addition, we continue to integrate the interim comprehensive assessments, interim assessment blocks and release SAT and PSAT question items from College Board and Khan Academy in daily lessons and utilize an interdisciplinary focus where all the aforementioned instructional strategies are embedded throughout all content areas with fidelity. We also have targeted and intentional small group instruction with supplemental classes and SRBI, performance tasks organically embedded in every unit and with every GEMS travel experience, and inquiry-based learning with high-level questioning. It is now my pleasure to introduce my friend and colleague, Mr. Dan Malletti, Principal of the Bloomfield High School.
Thank you, Ms. Poplin. Dr. Thompson, Mr. Harris, Board of Ed, family members, friends, colleagues. I'm going to report out on Bloomfield High School, grade 11 specifically, as measured by the National Merit Scholarship, SAT, which was given in the fall. I'll identify our strengths for literacy and numeracy and our focus areas like everyone else. In literacy, one of the strengths we saw was students being able to determine the meaning of words, not just vocabulary words, definitions, but what they mean in a certain context in the text as it relates to the theme of the passage. In addition, students have shown a strength in being able to support their thinking with textual evidence from the text, especially in the area of science. I heard my colleagues speaking about the focus around science and social studies. Forty percent of the SAT is based around science. Another forty percent is based around social studies. Our students showed a good strength in reading lab reports, articles that are based around science. In numeracy, students have a strength in solving linear equations and inequalities. An example, four X minus two is greater than zero. Students have shown a real strength in solving for X. They've also been able to interpret graphs, specifically those with an X-Y axis and identifying the slope and rate of change over time. For example, finding the slope to points two-five and negative three-ten. A few of the areas of focus we've seen as we've done in our data team process and in conferencing with students. In the area of literacy, as I spoke before, forty percent of the PSAT and SAT is based around social studies. Our students have shown that they need to strengthen their skills in working with primary documents, specifically around those that address related themes in, in history, historical and that have literary significance. In addition, they need to strengthen and hone their skills in just the basic conventions of standard English grammar, where to put a colon, semicolon, things of that nature. I'll jump to numeracy areas of focus and then I'll come back around to the strategies. But students, we need to hone and strengthen our skills in the focus area around scatter plots. As you saw before, students showed a strength in solving linear equations, but when it comes to scatter plots and investigating patterns, this is definitely an area that we can work across all content areas to strengthen the skill. In addition, students, we're going to be focusing on comparing properties of two functions, which are each represented in a different way. An example, when you're comparing functions, you have, you're evaluating the four X squared minus seven X plus nine, getting from point A to point B, which eventually, which is ironic because they can interpret slopes and areas of intercept, but how to get there is the way that they're showing, an area that we need to focus. Some of the strategies that we're using are close reading strategies, not only for literacy but for numeracy, identifying key vocabulary in terms and details. We're looking at, as we said, we heard the John Hattie's high effect size strategies, looking at those effect size strategies that are point six or above, point four being one year's growth, point six being one point five, so on and so forth. We're also looking at how we construct our assessments and our work for our students, making sure that these are very rigorous. And we're looking at question analysis, analysis and rigorous question design, specifically on those of selective response and distract the rationales when it comes to multiple choice. These are our areas, Bloomfield High School, of strengths and areas of focus moving forward for the March twenty-seventh SAT Day in two thousand nineteen.
Thank you so much, Mr. Malletti, and really thank you to all of our principals. I just want to share a little bit. I had the opportunity to meet with Dr. Bailey today and we were reviewing midterm exams that will be used at the high school. And she was showing me a world language exam in Spanish. And what they've done is they've integrated, they have three numeracy questions in that exam. So it speaks to the integration of numeracy and literacy in that world language class. And she showed me the questions. It was a graph, a bar graph, and students had to identify, answer a question about a rate of change relative to the bar graph. So it was a fairly complex question in English, but it asked about Spanish. Oh, I shouldn't give too much detail just in case someone needs to take it, right? So, but it's exciting to see those numeracy questions embedded in the world language assessment. So tonight, just to summarize, I know you've heard a lot of information, but if you want to experience significant progress toward your goal, you need to be intentional about the work you're doing every day. And our principals have shared the work that they're doing every day in their schools with our amazing teachers and our amazing students. So we'd like to, at this time, open it up for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Questions? Questions?
Just one quick one.
Go ahead.
Laurel, you'd mentioned academic review. And then as they progress down the line, it talked about data team process. Are they wanted just different names? But is there a difference between an academic review and a data?
Yeah. Some central office personnel there too, as well as myself, my reading coach, and teachers come in one at a time. And we discuss, they come in with folders. I know at one, this is what I showed you at one board meeting.
That is true.
And we will review the folders of each of the kids and then we'll ask the teacher questions individually. Where a data team is, the whole group will be coming in together. So if it's my second grade, all seven teachers are coming in together. We're looking at all their data. We're looking at strategies like by group.
So my question is, so you all do use data team as well?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I was, okay.
There's a short page that we can fill all of the strategies we use.
Say it again.
The PowerPoint slide is only spaced for a certain amount of things to add, but each of the schools going up to eighth grade or seventh grade does data teams and academic reviews and data teams throughout the entire semester.
But, Dr. Thompson, this is, you know, something he created and brought to us. It starts in the second grade, just to clarify. So, you know, we are accountable to all of the somewhat things, it's just that the academic review stuff.
Okay. My other question is, do you teach? I noticed at the high school, you talked about English grammar usage with writing and speaking, which is tremendously important if they're going to go to college. Is grammar taught?
Because within that Wilson Foundation Program, Open Core, grammar is taught within that, you know, the programs that we have for our kids.
So is this something new that's being taught? Have you continued to teach grammar all along?
We have, but now it's more structured and now it's a more easier for teachers to follow along the progression of it using those programs.
Okay. So that's taught all the way down the line?
Most of the time.
Okay. Just curious because I know at the college level, the university level, I've run into students who've never had, have not been taught grammar. And so I was just wondering, so I'm clear, in Bloomfield, grammar is taught from all the way down the line? Okay, very good, good. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Davis?
Please vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Oh, yes. Thank you for the, very, thank you for the report. I just wanted to ask Ms. Williams, when we were reporting on progress from last year, you were very disappointed with the scores that your school had received. And there was talk about taking a deeper dive and looking at root cause analysis and those kinds of things. So I'm just wondering, what did you find out and is that reflected in your areas of focus? And just briefly.
Okay. I will try to agree on that.
Because we don't have a lot of space. I know you have space.
Very true, Mr. Walters. So I have been working very closely with Dr. Thompson, Ms. McCann, Dr. Silver, Ms. Cullinan as well, really digging deep into what we have from smarter bounds, what we're able to get from them. Remember cohort data. So those students have moved on. My sixth graders where I was devastated are now in seventh grade with Dr. Ellis. So trying to figure out, was it that the teachers taught it and the students didn't learn it? Well, then the students didn't learn it, what's the point of teaching it? So figuring out, again, in my conversation with you earlier, adult action, right? What are the steps the adults are taking to really go from that surface level of learning to deep to transfer? So what we are doing is using those John Hattie effect size strategies in better intentional ways. We just did a deep dive into the STAR report data. So looking from the fall to the winter, seeing the change from last school year's winter data for sixth grade to this year's students for sixth grade and seeing where they are in comparison. I know, and I take deep breaths when I say it, that the way the state reports is sixth grade to sixth grade, not cohort data. So we need to not only move our kids up cohort-wise, but also make sure that we're moving them in that grade level band as well. So we have a three-year goal to get our kids up towards eighty percent. And in doing so, we're identifying which students we are seeing, where they, it's very cool. In STAR, you can actually dig down. It does not tell you the question, but it tells you the standard. It tells you the skill area where not only the class for that tier one intervention, tier one is where all students are getting good instruction, you can actually dig deeper by student and see where that student needs work. So what our teachers did with me, and as I said before, I sat with each and every one of them for thirty minutes. It was that important to really dig into each kid, look through the data and identify the next steps from this point forward now that we have the next set of data.
And that's a new process?
We are using it more intentionally and better. So even though we might have had that information in the past, we are just getting better at using it and identifying. My teachers are really diving in with me on that.
Thank you.
Yes.
Other questions?
Ms. Davis. Ms. Davis.
I do have a question.
Okay.
So, in the presentation, very engaging, very informative. My question is, when Mr. Malletti got up and spoke, he spoke about the SATs and the prep, and he talked specifically about the science component. Prior to all the presentations, no one mentioned that at all as a piece of learning. So how are we ensuring that our children are ready when they get to the high school? When looking at all of this, it's, I understand literacy and numeracy, but I don't see anything or not one mention of a science component as they go to get to the high school, for them to be ready to take SATs or prep for SATs in the ninth grade if they have not had any kind of curriculum-based specifically designed towards a science piece? Because that's very important if we're expecting them to do well on the SATs and not that just be a part of when they get to the ninth grade if it has not been mentioned. And I know that we had spoken about bringing after-school programming and would introduce STEAM or STEM as a part of our learning, extended day. But in the day, in the classroom, how are our children being taught at a level before they get to the SAT part about science?
That's a great question, Ms. Davis. We did not ask our principals to, we asked them to focus on literacy and numeracy. So we did not ask them to focus on science tonight. We do have an extended day program, which does have, like you mentioned, the curriculum that is focused on STEAM. We also have, I do know that Ms. Paglisch talked about how the students were using close reading strategies, and I think Ms. Williams said this as well, in all of their classes, in their reading classes, their math classes, their social studies and their science classes. And we do have science classes in place throughout the continuum of, the vertical continuum from our youngest learners to our high school students. But that wasn't our focus tonight. But if there is an interest, and I sense there is, we'd be happy to provide more information that's more detailed and comprehensive at another time.
Well, like you said, with time and what they provided, I think was very informative, but that was just stood out because when Mr. Malletti spoke, he spoke specifically about the SAT and the science. And I understand how important that piece is for the SAT scores. Let me ask one more question. The Wilson Foundation, how does that interpret or move on to the John Hattie effect?
Okay.
How do they correlate?
John Hattie is a researcher who, when someone does research and they conduct a study with two hundred subjects in it, and they answer a question and they determine that with these two hundred subjects, they found that asking, having students set goals was highly effective. And if they divided their sample in half, a hundred of the students didn't set goals, the other hundred did set goals. And they found that the hundred that set goals had a higher performance than those that didn't. So that's one study with two hundred students. John Hattie does a meta-analysis where he takes that study and those statistics with those two hundred students, and he adds all of the studies together that study the same thing. So he could have a hundred thousand subjects in that study to determine the effect size. And what an effect size is, is if you have an average growth during the course of a year, you expect like a year's growth in a year's time. But what Dr. Hattie has found is that an effect size, something that has a large effect size, like something larger than, say if we just use a simple number like one point five, which is an enormous effect size. But I know that Mr. White would be able to tell me the strategy exactly.
Teacher clarity.
Teacher clarity?
Clarity.
Okay, I think that's a one point four four. So what that will do is for student results, when we use those high effect strategies, it will move that student's performance. They might get a normal year's growth, but when we intentionally use that strategy, they'll actually see a year and four months growth instead of just that single year's growth. Another way of looking at this is the effect size is about beyond the standard deviation. So if your average achievement would be at one hundred, with this high effect size strategy, it would move the performance one point four standard deviations above the average. So if your standard deviation is fifteen, like in an intelligence test, one point five standard deviation, which puts you well above, like close to a one thirty, one twenty in terms of your IQ, if you use this high effect size strategy. So it's a, it's a much more complex thing than that. But the effect size strategies can be applied across the continuum, going back to your foundations question. That is a program that we've brought into Laurel School that was researched and brought in because it's highly effective in teaching the students at that grade level foundational skills.
I appreciate that, but it seems like we have a lot of different models that happen in our district. It seems like we have a lot of different models that we use. There was an Epstein model that we were talking about not too long ago.
That's related to family and community engagement. We do use that model.
We do a lot of different models.
Yes, right.
So it's strictly for planning purposes, not so much for, just the way you handle, that's the way our children are handled or the academics are handled are what these, why these models are brought in, correct?
Yes, we want to adopt the best practices nationally and internationally.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay. I thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I thank you, the principals. Two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty proposed academic calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. In your packet, you have the proposed calendar for two thousand nineteen.
In your packet, you have the proposed calendar for 2019, 2020. This calendar, in essence, is pretty similar to this year's calendar and the previous year's calendar. By that, I mean the start date is the last Wednesday in Wednesday. That's preceded by two teacher days. One is for convocation and the other for professional development. So, the calendar before you incorporates 180 student instructional days. It incorporates six teacher professional days as well. It also incorporates six half-day teacher-parent conferences. And it also incorporates two half-day professional development days. When we did a review of surrounding districts, about five or six of them, we were concerned about the April break to make sure that they were consistent among the districts that we did poll, which were Windsor, West Hartford, Sinsbury, South Windsor. So, the April break is consistent there, going from April 13th to April 17th. The start date, August 28th, is pretty similar among those districts as well. One of the things I do want to mention, the end date, barring any inclement weather days, is Thursday, June 11th. And, but, the one thing that this calendar has, that you may have noticed, is that Veterans' Day on November 11th, that Monday, is a non-school day. We have in the past had school on those days. This year, several veterans from Bloomfield contacted the superintendent, and in deference to their wishes, the calendar before you has that as a holiday to honor veterans in that manner. Other than that, pretty much this calendar is reflective of the current calendar and the previous year calendars.
Can I have a motion, please, Mr. Walters?
Yes, I move that the Bloomfield Board of Education approve the 2019, 2020 Academic Calendar as presented.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second. Are there any questions? Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So done.
Thank you.
CAPE Updates, just to mention, I'm very excited to recognize Pat Davis, because Pat just recently signed up to participate in the newest CAPE Leadership Institute. It's going to begin February. And for those of you unfamiliar, the CAPE Institute that's put on every year is a series of workshops, four lengthy workshops, four hours apiece, and that you learn a lot more of what's involved in being an effective board member. Not that she's not already effective, but she'll be, become even more knowledgeable, even more knowledgeable of, no, I'm not going to say all of that now. And I am a graduate of the Leadership Institute, but you only have to take two more years after this. Okay? Additionally, I'm going to be in Washington DC attending NS National School Board Association Advocacy Equity and Opportunity Workshop, January 25th through the 29th. I will be representing CAPE as an organization. And the last day of our workshop, the 29th, we will spend it on Capitol Hill, talking with our legislators and our senators about, again, staying behind and supporting efforts to make sure we get a fair and equitable distribution of money coming out of the federal government. Okay? Any questions for me? Board comments, Mr. Fryman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, Happy New Year, everybody. Happy New Year to everybody outside watching us. First of all, I want to echo the sentiments from our board members. Congratulations once again to our high school football team, Coach Outlaw, Ms. Shandemeyer, who's already left. One thing people don't realize is that when we have a winning team, it also brings our community together. And it's so nice when we go out there and people are talking about, not only about our football team, but also the good things that are taking place at our, all our schools. So, it's, that's another nicety about, you know, winning team, is it brings us all together. Secondly, we were listening to a couple of other discussions here, and one of the big things I kept hearing several times is that how other towns are always coming to Bloomfield to see some of the things that we're taking, that are taking place here. And it's nice to be a leader in that people are following the good things that are taking place in our town. I also want to say thank you to our various principals who have already gone home. We thank you for coming out this evening and for your lengthy reports. And I'd be admis in stating that our good friend, Mr. Reich, would always be out there, you know, yelling rigor, rigor, rigor. I can hear him in my head right now, you know, regarding, you know, learning. And I think that's one of the things, that's one of the components that goes hand in hand. But it's nice to hear that we are continuing, you know, with our goal to increasing, you know, our literacy and numeracy. Couple other things, I don't want to make this too lengthy. Six more months, and our class of 2019 will be graduating. So, please, parents, students, make sure that you are set for your graduation and in all aspects of what you're going to be doing next. It's one thing of going out the door, but what happens when that door shuts? Are you going out to college? Are you going to a career? Are you going to the military? It's time to decide now before that last day. Also, remember that it's going to be, we're looking at our various, you know, budget season. So, parents, if you want to participate, please come to our meetings. Lastly, I also want to say my condolences to the various education family who have passed away. Lucio Von, what a wonderful gentleman. Betty Egan, she used to visit me at the TV station, you know, many, many times, always talking about food. You know, her and I always had a nice dialogue about different recipes. So, once again, my heart goes out to our family and all our loss. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over back to the chair.
Mrs. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Harris. I just really just like to say Happy New Year to everyone. I really thank the principals for your hard work. I thank you for your presentation. I think it's all very important that we all understand that why we're here for our students, to make sure that they're successful, and that we stay diligent to our efforts, even on the board end, and on the teachers and the principals. And I do so appreciate all you've done and all you do. And every time when you come here and you present to us, I really appreciate it because as a parent of a student, a graduate and senior, you know, I, it's just really important that we know exactly what's going on. And people that aren't here and can hear the presentation, you know, it's really important that they understand what you all are doing and get involved and understand and come up with questions and, you know, hold you accountable for what you're here for. And it's for our students. So, I really thank you and I appreciate that. And I'm very, very sorry, I offer my condolences to Terry Williams-Smith's family. I had known her for a very long time. She's an excellent music teacher, and she will definitely be missed in our district. And to the others that I did not know, I do offer my condolences to them and their family. And I am looking forward, as Mr. Harris mentioned, to the CAPE Leadership Institute. I've signed up for it because I just want to get stronger, I just want to know more, be knowledgeable to help my students and help the community. So, with that, I thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you. Ms. Bolton?
Yes, just very briefly, again, Happy New Year to everyone. I would like to just express my condolences to the families of those who have deceased. Two of the teachers, both Terry Williams-Smith and Mr. Coggin, were both teachers at A-Race, where I was the principal there. So, wonderful individuals who have certainly left a mark on our district. So, I'll certainly keep positive thoughts about them and their families. I'd also like to just say that I was particularly happy to hear the wonderful presentation from Wintonbury in the Paying It Forward and the Kindness Project. That is just something that we really need to continue in a time where our world is so not the way we would love to have it. And I think that having the youngest children in our community to spearhead it this year, I just, I just love that idea. And it got me to thinking about what I can do to help someone and to brighten someone's day. So, thank you so much for the presentation.
Mr. Walters?
Yes, as I say at every board meeting, I feel like I'm repeating what has already been said, but some things I do need to say. First of all, in the passing of the educators here in Bloomfield, certainly condolences go out to those families, and specifically to Ms. Terry Williams-Smith, who actually taught my children and was a, was a friend, was a friend. So, and things just happen so fast. And it really took me by surprise to hear about her passing. But we keep pressing forward. We celebrated our football players tonight again. And when Coach Outlaw came up, I thought he was one of the students at first. I was like, wait a minute, where's the coach? And then I realized, oh, yeah, that is him, you know, the coach, the football coach. But the kinds of things that these students have demonstrated, when you talk about the Michael's Cup Award, when you talk about this district of sports, student athletes, 22 sportsmanship awards, I mean, isn't that something to say? That's fantastic. And then you look at what's happening over at Wintonbury. This is their fourth year of kindness at Wintonbury. And, and so, maybe it's starting there and it's going up to the high school, I don't know, but some good things, some good things are happening in Bloomfield with our students. And when you talk about athletes and they're college-bound, I heard that, many of them are college-bound, they've been on honor roll. And then the coach said they practiced in the snow, rain, and cold, and they played in mud and water up to their ankles, and they still demonstrated good sportsmanship. I mean, you know, and produced good grades. I mean, what's better than that? That's absolutely, that's leadership. That's what Ms. Bolton said, I agree. That's leadership. What a good district, and what good students. The presentations from the principals this evening, and their passion for their work, their concern for our students. We're certainly doing some good things in Bloomfield. I just hope that we continue to do them. And I thank everybody who empowers and impact our students, from the cabinet members down to the classroom, administrators, the cafeteria workers, the security guards. All those people impact our students, secretaries. And so, when you have that kind of community, this is the results, good students, good athletes. So, we're moving in the right direction, and, you know, we just hope that this year continues in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. Happy New Year, again, to each and every one of you. What I do want to just mention, and if you can put it on your calendar, I'd love to have you put it on there, but this Friday, January 11th, from 10:00 to 12:00, at the Legislative Office Building, there's going to be, there's going to be a program called The Importance of African-American History in the Classroom. Now, many of you know State Rep. Bobby Gibson, who represents Bloomfield and Windsor. He's also a curriculum intervention specialist at Carmen A-Race Middle School. Well, Bobby is leading a law that is being written that's going to make African, the teaching of African-American history a mandatory item within our curriculum going forward. Now, so, this program, or this presentation on Friday from 10:00 to 12:00, will be a continuation of one that we held here in Bloomfield about two months ago. And it's basically acknowledging from 1619 to 2019, 400 years from the beginning of slavery. And we're taking note of it, and we're acknowledging it. There are several panelists that will be speaking, for whatever reason, I do not know, I'm one of the panelists. And so, but I'm there with a prestigious group of panelists, so.
[inaudible]
Yeah, well, yeah, some of them, so, they put me on first, though, so, so I don't have to pick up behind anybody. And so, if you get an opportunity, come down to the Legislative Office Building, Room 1A, that's where we'll be on Friday. And, again, my deepest sympathies to all of the deceased members of the former members of the faculty. I worked, I was a student under Lucio Von. He taught me economic geography when I was a student, sophomore year at Bloomfield High. He was also my JV basketball coach. And then when I came back to teach, he was my vice principal and principal. Betty Egan, I go way back with her. John Coghill, Dolores and I worked with him, and he was a seventh-grade team leader, and just a wonderful, wonderful person, and an organist in his church. And Terry Williams, that just, I can't say enough about her, you know? Terry worked at the high schools, she worked at the middle schools, she worked at Metacoma. She was also a choir director in my church. So, I, I mean, I got years and years and years. And then, again, my former student, Roger Weaver-Bay, it's just, it's been a rough start of the year. But you know what? We're going to make this. We're going to make this because we got wonderful stories that came in tonight about the good works that are going on in Bloomfield school system. And I echo all the comments that have been made. And having said that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
We are adjourned.